Good evening. I have seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order and please ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Here.
And Mr. John Welch?
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening we have Pastor Gary Green to lead us in prayer. Pastor Green.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Let's all bow our heads and look to the Almighty. Heavenly Father, Father of grace, Father of all opportunity and wisdom, we just pause at this time of year to celebrate the birth of your child, who came to light the way and show us the way. We ask that same light shine on this council and this mayor tonight. For your word tells us, you raise up all those that rule, you bring down those when the rule is over. For you are the almighty gods. We just ask that the light and wisdom that you grant people, your word tells us any man lacks wisdom. Simply ask of you, God, who gives liberally to them to ask. And above all, we pray as we celebrate this season, the birth of Jesus Christ, we pray, God, your original intent and purpose for sending your son with such a gift to this world, peace on this earth and goodwill toward men. May your goodwill and peace rest upon this council and mayor tonight and all they endeavor to do for this community. In Jesus' name we ask for it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The side of Mr. To determine agenda additions. Are there any additions we need to make to the agenda? Here now and move on to consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda contains amendments of December five, city council meeting also include our two applications to renew cereal malt beverage beer licenses for 2024. Both applicants Dollar General and Myra, Mariah, Ramen and Sushi have met all the requirements of the state of Kansas and Bellator city codes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda is listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Smith and second for Mr. Welch. All in favor say aye.
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 Same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next item is appropriations ordinance. So this reporting period included one payroll period. Cost of issuing insurance fee issuance fees associated with the 2023 temporary note and bond issue accounted for about $69,320 of the total. And these expenses are supported by special assessments levy to the benefiting properties. Any questions concerning the appropriations ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to approve appropriations ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion for Mr. Dean and Mr. Second for Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That motion carries five to zero. So city requested appearances this evening. We have Mr. Ken Lee with Garver Engineering to provide update on fifty-third street bid solicitations. Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ken Lee with Garver. I was asked to, Ann and I've been working on getting fifty-third ready out to get out to bid and I'm actually going to give an update on fifty-third and a couple of other projects too, tonight. So just kind of run through some of the things we've been working on, just in case you and the citizens are wondering what what's going on with some of our projects we're working on. So I'm going to start out with, is it the other? Oh, too many remotes. Okay, so I'm going to start out talking about Cozy Drive. That one is a petition project that was put out earlier in the year. And we have turned in a hundred percent not for construction plans for final review by city staff. One of the key challenges that we ran into on the project was at the head of the cul-de-sac there. There's two crossroad culvert pipes that go underneath it and trying to get those to clear and get everything low enough for the right of way to drain into it. We ended up having to do a cross-street. We're going to do a cross-street trench drain. We talked about doing a valley gutter, but we're going to do a trench drain in that area to allow the water in that area to drain into the ditches. So we're still going to have a little bit of ditches at the very east end of the project there, just in the last property at each end. But just with the amount of water that's coming from the addition to the north without doing a tremendous amount of downstream work to lower the channel, we just weren't going to be able to get it low enough. So it'll still be improvement. They'll still be curb and gutter in the area even with the ditches. So the water will stay on the street until it goes into the ditches, but it's just one small stretch about a hundred feet that's still going to have a little bit of ditch on each side. But we're, that's, that's, final reviews are being done on that. The plan is to get the final review done and get started in either March or April and completed. It'll be completed in early to mid 2024. The project won't take long once it gets going.
So just a quick question on that. You said there's going to be a trench drain.
Yeah.
At, at thirty-seventh street, right?
Yeah, actually the trench drain is going to be up near where the, it's going to be up here near where the cross-street valley gutters are. It's at that end up in there.
Okay.
And one other thing that did end up coming up that I didn't have budgeted, but I, it's not going to affect the ability for the project to bid successfully. I put together an estimate and we're well within what we had set up. We have to relocate a fire hydrant out there. It's right in front of the pipes today and with the longer pipes that just the fire hydrant can't remain where it is. So we're going to have to relocate the hydrant about twenty feet east to allow the new pipes to go in. So that's one of the little change there. But yeah, so it'll be at the east end of that. So Aurora Park, one of the things that the blue up on the screen there is this parts is the paving petition project that we've been working on. Ty, and I mentioned this at the last time I made a presentation, we were, we were adding in in the red, an ad alternate for all the other ditches in there. Go ahead and get the plans put together. They're done. We're going to have a bid and add alternate and see where it falls and you know, the city will have to at that point decide how they want to proceed. But we'll have real world numbers on what it's going to take to do that work. Again, same as Cozy Drive, we'll try likely bid both of these projects at the same time with the goal of getting them both done in the next year. So any questions on those two projects before I go on? Okay. The next thing I'm going to talk about is the fifty-third Oliver to Woodlawn project. Again, hundred percent not for construction plans are in with Ann and the city staff to review. We've been coordinating with Baughman. They've got a new plat going in there and they've asked us for plan information to design their connection into our street project. We still do have one final piece of right of way that we're working on and the final reutility relocations are contingent upon that right of way. Work is still projected at this point to begin in March of 2024. So one of the reasons why we wanted to talk to you tonight is how to handle bidding the project. There was a lot of concern about other arterial street projects and the way that they played out. And what we're considering on this project is doing it as a calendar date project rather than a working day project. So we're going to allocate. The project starts on March fourth. It has to be substantially complete and open to traffic on October first, 2024 with final completion a month later. And that would include any signage, seating, any other miscellaneous work that would need to be done along the length of the project. That allows for approximately a hundred and fifty working days. I did meet with two different contractors to talk about the project. One of them claimed that they thought they could get the project done in a hundred days. Another one said that one twenty is adequate. So what we're doing here is is we're allocating more days. So on the next screen is we want to encourage the project to get done more quickly. And so the thing that we're proposing is to do an incentive bonus for early completion prior to October first. And we're thinking $2,000 per day up to a maximum of $90,000. So not a huge additional expense, but if they got the maximum bonus, it would mean that the project was open at the same time school is starting. So we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have construction going on during the school year. So that's the goal of the incentive bonuses to encourage them to get done in time. And part of where I was going with the working days and the having the extra days in there, we would have it written into the agreement that they would have up to fifteen days of weather or other delays that are, that they don't get compensated for. They don't get rewarded for. If, if they have a five, if they have fifteen or if they have twelve days of bad weather, sorry, you still got to be done by the, the same day. If we have extended bad weather, more than three weeks of bad weather that shuts them down, we would have a conversation with them about extending it, but that would only be for the days in excess of fifteen days, if that makes sense. So if there's twenty days of weather days, they could get five days of credit, not twenty. So that's, that's what we're looking at to try and encourage it. You have to give them a little bit of cushion for weather because there will be weather days.
So that's working days, right? It's not weekends or?
Yeah, just, it would be just working days. So yeah, they don't get credit for Saturdays and Sundays. If they weren't going to be out there on a scheduled workday, they don't get credit for those days. It would only be for, for actual days that they were unable to work. And so we're proposing a $90,000 maximum bonus just to keep the price under control and then a thousand dollar penalty day. We, there's two different ways to look at this. One is to have McCrew after the fifteenth. The other one is to have McCrew after October first. So that's one thing. And the, we talked to one of the contractors about this and they said on the one last one they worked on, if they got done in this example on September thirtieth, they'd get a $2,000 bonus. If they got done on October first, it would be nothing. If they got done on October second, they'd have a thousand dollar penalty. So, so it's one of those things that the penalty, you have one day of grace for the, it's just, it is the contract and that's it. Do you have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Well, but you said the penalty would be accrue after October fifteenth.
And that's what I'm saying. Do we want to do it on the fifteenth or do we just want to have it to where it's right on that day? So that's the one thought there. It's a little more punitive to have it start immediately, but we wanted to kind of talk about, do you like the idea of offering an incentive to the contractors to get done early? Or do we want to just go straight project and not do the incentives? And then when should we have those penalties stay start? Should they start on October second or should they start on the fifteenth? So I, I wanted to give you, give you some, put that before you to kind of think about as far as from your perspective, knowing what we've seen on the other projects. And of course, the numbers, those are just numbers that we came up with. Do you want to encourage them to be done more quickly and have higher bonuses? Do you want to have a larger total pool? How do you want to do that as far as do we want to go up to a maximum of 10% of the project cost? There's different ways to handle it. So I wanted to get your perspective on, you know, encouraging this project to get done more quickly. How would you like us to implement that?
Do you think the total cost is going to be just wild?
I think it's.
Wild guess on the total cost? What kind of percentage is a thousand dollars a day?
Oh, it's a thousand dollars a day is under one percent per day. It, we're, we're expecting the project to be in the 1.5 million dollar range or somewhere in there. So one percent would be a $1,500 a day.
Okay. I'll weigh in then with my opinion. I think we should give them till the fifteenth of October and then start charging $2,000 a day.
Okay.
Hit them a little harder, but give them a little leeway.
Okay.
I like the, the idea of the bonus. The concern I have with it is that you've padded the, the workdays with thirty days. So you're going to give them a bonus for, for some of that pad. Maybe we start, redo it if, if you're, you have that gap there between September first and October first, so there's no bonus.
Well, and that's where it gets complicated because you have to give them, if you're going to do a calendar date, you have to allow for bad weather.
Right.
And you're, you're kind of, you, we could pick a date, but that's, that's the catch on those kind of projects is how do you do that? Do you only, do you start the bonus? Does it only start on September fifteenth? Is that what you're getting at? Is they only start getting a bonus if they're done two weeks early? Is that what you're basically saying? If we're, if we're, if we're factoring in some delay, the bonus only starts if they're two weeks ahead of the scheduled date.
If the, and, and of course I understand you only talked to two contractors, but the contractors, the proprietors of the contract.
Say I can do this in a hundred twenty days and we've given them a hundred fifty. We've got a thirty day pad.
Yeah, and well, of course, we put the extra, I put the extra days in there because people tell you stuff all the time.
Yeah, I get it.
And also your weather delays are going to take out of that thirty days.
Yeah, they'll lead into that a little bit, but we, we don't want to, we don't want to back them into a super tight corner, but we do have a little extra play in there certainly to, to work with. One thing that to consider here too is we are still waiting for right of way. So we don't know the exact start date too. So that may come into play in the discussion before we get done, but.
Right.
But you, the idea of doing a heavier penalty, but leaving, giving them that extra two weeks before the penalties apply. I, I guess, is there any kind of a consensus of that sounds like a good idea? And I, we're not making a formal action here. I'm just looking for feedback.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean.
I do want to be transparent. The company I work for may bid this project, but my sort of input on the idea of incentive would be unless we're achieving the goal that we're trying to achieve, which it sounded to me like we're trying to get it done before schools start. Yeah, I feel like it should be focused around the concept of having it done before school starts. It's kind of my input and that's all I'll be saying on this matter. So just figured I'd mention that. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. D, or Mr. David?
I, I like the idea of the penalty being more severe, more like the reward.
Okay.
I also like it focused on the goal that we're trying to achieve. And then my question back to you is if you're bidding this contract, aren't you just going to raise your price by the couple percent that you need to make sure you don't, you can still break even with the, with the penalty?
So, so that's the problem with cutting it too tight is, is if you do cut it too tight, that's what ends up happening is they're going to say, well, I think I'm going to use fifteen penalty days. They'll bake $30,000 or whatever the number is into the price. That's, that is what really happens if you, if you cut it too tight. So the, that's the one thing to consider, but as far as the 2,000 goes, certainly it's more than fair to say if that's your reward, that's the same penalty. That's certainly a good way to look at it. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
Mike, you said something this, I agree with the mayor sentiment that as initially presented, it felt like you're double dipping on the grace period a little bit with both cushioning the October first, October fifteenth timeline and also building in those extra kind of thirty days for what we thought it should take. So I think maybe one or the other there makes sense. I also wanted to call out that I was just pulling up the two, five, nine calendar for this year. I don't know that next year's published, but this year, the first day of school was August fifteenth. So October first is.
The, the ninety thousand would be forty-five days before October first. Okay.
Be October fifteenth, August fifteenth.
So that's, then that's where we were kind of looking at was the idea of, of it being that forty-five days ahead of October first would be the maximum of benefit they could get. Now, to your point, the thing we could do is we could say we've built in extra days. You have to exceed thirty days before you get any additional days too. That could be the other thing is, is you're allowed these thirty days, but you aren't granted extra days until you hit thirty. So that's certainly another tact we could take on it to, to kind of hold them accountable for, if the idea is to reward them or to protect them from bad weather days, they get the extra days, but they don't, they don't get to add days more quickly.
At a high level, I'm not opposed to the incentive model for getting things done early. I am a little concerned about the overall cost of the project and adding, you know, potentially $90,000 to the project isn't insignificant given what we're spending on streets. So I'm trying to weigh that a little bit. Ultimately, I'd probably like a recommendation from our city engineer and from Garver on how to most effectively bid this.
Yeah, we suggested it because given the concerns about delays in the past, we feel like this is an effective way to do it. One of the contractors we talked to about it, they said for them, it, it probably ended up being a wash because in order to get the maximum bonus, they had to work weekends and overtime and so they paid their employees extra. So they probably really didn't even come ahead cash wise for them, but they just wanted to get the maximum bonus. So, so it, it, it's hard to say as far as what, what's best, but we certainly, it's not required to do it, but if, if you want to increase the chances of the project being done quickly, we feel like this is a way to do that. And I don't know if you want to add anything else on that, but no, so we talked about, we were in agreement that it was a good idea to present to you as far as what to do. So.
One other thing, the October first date was total completion. The road would be open to traffic before that, correct?
No, substantial completion is October first. So that's open to traffic. Total completion was November first. That gives them a month to finish up any street signs that they have to remove and reset, any seating or other stabilization, those kind of things. Just gives them adequate time to get that work done.
So, so we're not even thinking they're going to get done before school?
Well.
We got six weeks there between school start and October first.
The, the, the goal is to get the roadway open. They may be doing some work on the, on the sides of the road with seating and other activities, but the road itself, the goal is to have it open before school if they, if they want to get the bonus.
That's why I asked about through traffic.
So ask the question again, sorry.
I, I, I said the October first date was project completion. We would have through traffic before then.
Yeah.
And you changed back to no, we wouldn't have traffic until October first. So I'm kind of confused.
So it, sorry, I apologize for that. The, when you said total completion, I, I was thinking there, there's two different completion dates. There's substantially complete where traffic is carried in. That's October first is the goal on that one. Project, the, the total project completion date would be November first and that's to clean up the edges of it. It does, is that answer the question?
Not really because the definition of substantial completion is still up in there. When does traffic get on there? Does it get there at substantial completion or earlier than that?
Well.
That's the date we're really worried about is when people can use the road.
October first would be the substantial completion where two-way traffic would be established and the road would be open to traffic unimpeded except for, you know, minor, minor activities along the route. That, as far as what we're looking at for the definition, substantial completion would be where it'd be open to traffic.
So if you do the bonus plan, does that mean substantial completion is done fifteen or as much as forty-five days early or does that mean total completion is done forty-five days early?
We would be doing the, the bonus would be based on substantial completion. Because the goal here is to get people on the road and using the road.
And, and then how would you address total completion if they got the bonus paid?
So if they got the bonus paid, but they dilly-dallyed around and did not get done with, with completion by November first, they'd start getting penalized a thousand or $2,000 a day for every day past that.
So potentially in that scenario, you'd have two and a half months that they could do total completion.
If they wanted to lose their bonus, yeah. Yeah, if they, if they wanted to see their bonus disappear, they, they could, they could end up, every day past November first, they'd start losing $2,000 a day.
Yeah, but, but if they earned the bonus, hey, they, let's just build the scenario, the hypothetical, if they get done on August fifteenth.
Yeah.
And then.
Oh, you're saying.
Substantial completion is August fifteenth. They've earned the $90,000 bonus.
True.
And then they, they piddle around for the next two and a half months.
I see where you're going with it.
Just to get the total completion and they're done by November first. So they're, they're, they're done and they're not going to get penalties.
That, that's what we were proposing. I mean, we could, we could make it. I guess we could talk about that rather than having a calendar date for total completion, that we would state that total, the project shall be totally complete thirty days after substantial completion. That's, that would cure that problem.
Okay.
So we.
I just wondered if you thought through that.
That's easy enough to do.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering if we care about that as long as our big thing is the substantial traffic.
No, to his point, it, it's, that's a good change actually. It, that's a good change to state that it would be thirty days after, thirty calendar days after it. That's a, there's nothing wrong with that change. That's a good suggestion.
Just so it doesn't drive in costs. I don't want to make contract terms that drive in costs.
Thirty days should be.
For no benefit to us.
Thirty days should be plenty of time to, to finish up the, the loose ends on the project. So I, I like the suggestion. So anyway, so the other thing that came up in constr, in the conversations with the contractors was concerns about concrete because you said you wanted to do a concrete add alternate. And when I talked to the contractor about that, it was kind of a oof. And their concern is trying to stage their construction, having their cure days on it, backing up. They're concerned that it's going to be harder to get the project done within that timeframe. They, while they don't see any problem getting an asphalt project done in that time, doing a con, a concrete project where you're going to have more cure days built into it became, they mentioned that might be a concern. So our thought on that is one is that we would want the contractor to provide a revised plan to meet their schedule if they did concrete. And then also, should it be part of the bid package when you're making a selection on contractor where they say how long it'll take to get the concrete done and and if they commit to. And if they commit to that, do we, do we make that a factor if it's going to be considered as an ad alternate? That their schedule be part of the decision-making process? That you might pay more money to a contractor who's going to have a more aggressive schedule. So that obviously complicates the decision-making process. But is that something that you'd want to have in play, given that the first comment out of the contractor's mouth when we talked about doing concrete was. I don't know if I can get that project done as quickly as I can the asphalt. So I just, any, any feedback or thoughts on that?
I think including the schedule would make sense. I personally want to see the concrete ad alternate auction, just so that we know what that looks like.
Yeah, I think he needs to have the schedule. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I kind of think you ought to have the schedule on both of them. If they think they can do it faster, tell us what they can do.
Yeah, I. We, we could, we could make that a consideration on both of my, I, I can talk to Ann about that as far as that goes. Again, what you, what you run into there then is, is, uh. We, we would need to structure the projects that they would, their bonuses would be based on their schedule then. Is that what you're saying? That if they're going to be awarded the project for getting done more quickly, they're accepting that their bonus. Is contingent upon that. Okay, that does comp- again, that complicates the selection process, but.
But if he really thinks he can get asphalt done in the middle of August and have it open before school, it might be worth. The difference in costs and it might not.
Yeah, well, and of course the question there, what you're going to run into on that is what if you get one bid and I'm just making up numbers? So what if you get one bid that's one point five million and they say October first and you get one that's one point six million, then they say. August first. That hundred thousand dollars extra difference you'd be paying to get it done by August first. Do the, how do the penalty or how do the bonus days then go? Are they based on that August first date? Is that what you're saying then that they would be?
Whatever date they promise they can get it done by, we've based the penalties on.
Okay, well, uh, that's an interesting thought.
We could have three bids. Well, because we haven't defined anything, we could have our dates that you think it can be done by. And then they could. Bid when they think it can be done and how much they think that's worth to get it done by that date.
Yeah.
I like that idea a lot. The timeliness is a very important part of this project for us. So understanding. The contractor's availability and what they can commit to, in my mind, should factor into the decision. We don't always go with the low bid. We don't have to go with the low bid. We can consider other things like schedule and I think we should.
Okay. Well, uh, what I will probably do is I, I'll take this feedback and I'll talk with Ann. We may talk with a couple contractors and get some feedback and. If, if we haven't ran into the, where we're bidding it yet, we might bring this back to the council to let you know if there's any additional feedback that we receive. How does that sound?
Yeah, I think we need to get a, get a bid out, big package out though.
Yeah, no, I, I don't want to delay the bid. If we get to where the right of way puts us in a position, I'd like to, to move ahead aggressively on it. So.
Yeah.
So that, that's it on the fifty-third. Uh, any other questions about that project right now? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hamburg.
Just with the, with Fifty-third Street, having those long driveways on the north and. The, the people on the south and not having a lot of side streets to get into homes or how, how do you anticipate accommodating those people with the work being done?
So a, a couple of the additions have more than one entrance. So in those, it's easy. You just leave one or the other open. On the ones that only have one entrance, they're going to have to stage the construction where they only do half the entrance at the time and. Accommodate them going through the other half. Um, on some of the. Driveways, they may have to do some kind of a temporary accommodation for folks in that respect for, for getting them into their driveway. Or they may have to. Depending on their location, they may have to park across the street in one of the additions overnight or for a couple of days. Part of that depends on what type of, uh, surfacing we do. It, the concrete, that's where concrete becomes a little more complicated because of cure time. Asphalt, you can have somebody in there the next day. Concrete, you have to have them a week. So it, it is a little more complicated with the concrete, but most of them it'll be just working with the neighbors or working with the property owners that are impacted to see how to carry them through. So. Uh, I wanted to go ahead and give an update on Forty-Fifth Street and just talk about where we are on that. We, we've continued to work on our preliminary plans east of Glendale. Uh, the traffic study, the, the actual. Traffic counts have been done. We're a couple of weeks out from having our traffic study completed. It's kind of crazy to say that it's only a few weeks out and it's January, but that's where we are. The, uh, the one thing we talked about and we're going to have a website that's going to go active in January. And our plan on that is to meet with city staff in early January to go over what we've put together. And then at the council meeting on the sixteenth. The second meeting in sixth, in the sixteenth, I want to kind of walk through the website with you guys, show you what we're planning on. Make sure there's no questions or any issues. And if there are none, we're going to go live on the seventeenth with this website. And the goal of the website is going to be to, uh, provide information on the project, give people the opportunity to feedback. I'll have some examples here in a minute. But the goal is to do a public meeting a couple of weeks after that. And then in, uh, late February, the council, we'd take all the information from the public meeting. We would, uh, any of the feedback we got through the web portal. And we would provide that for council so you could make the final determination on what you want to do with that intersection at the west end of the project. And, um, I don't have any idea right now. I, I asked my traffic guys, uh, is it, is a roundabout looking reasonable? Is it signalized? Is, is the signalized a reasonable option? I don't have any input on that yet. They're still working through the numbers and. They're, they're still actually going through their projections. So I've been working with Ann on getting some other information to help them flesh out their study. And we're still projecting field check plans to be done in early twenty twenty-four. I mentioned the website. So we started the design. So. We have a landing page that will, people will come to when they go look at it and it's going to look something like this. This is what we got set up preliminary, but we still need to meet with city staff to get some feedback. But there'll be a, uh. A registration page for people to register if they want to get up email updates. If they register, we'll have a list where they can get email updates on it if they want to ask for it. There'll be a general information page, a project design materials page that'll talk and give some information on the project. Roundabout information, we're going to have a page that'll talk about roundabouts and those types of things, different aspects of it. There's a frontage road on the project that we've talked before. So there'll be some information on that frontage road and what we're doing on that. A project timeline and then a FAQ page that'll have different. Frequently asked questions. I've got a list of questions that I'm going to be giving answers for. We'll talk with city staff and see if there's any other questions that need to be added to that. So like one of the things we might have on a page, uh, for like the roundabout is. Roundabouts are a divisive topic. A lot of people love them. A lot of people hate them. But like that graphic on the left shows on a roundabout, there's eight points of, uh. Interaction for cars in a roundabout, there's eight points in a traditional intersection. It's. A lot. I, I think it's thirty-two, but, uh, there's a lot more opportunities and anybody who sat at the four-way stop at, uh, you know. Forty-fifth and Oliver where I live, they know the amount of decision-making that goes on as far as if my first, are they first? Did they go slow or they stopped? That gets very, very simplified because you're only deciding what one other person is doing. Rather than what are three other people doing? So it dramatically reduces the decision-making. So we'll have some information on that. There's also some Stacy study information. And then on the right, there is a typical roundabout design. So we might have a page like that that kind of. Has the anatomy of a roundabout. It talks about how people drive through it and some other information on it. These are some of the draft pages and you can't read that here, but like when they go and they click general information. It, it'll have some general descriptions about the project, uh, intersection improvements. It'll have some text on that. The frontage road will have the page like I mentioned on that. There'll be more graphics on it before we get done, but it'll be just providing information on the project. And so right now there's nothing coming up, but we'll have a coming soon page. Once we get a little closer. If somebody is to go to the page too early, they're just going to get that plat splash page that says coming soon. And then at, at the right time, it'll come live. So. Uh, any questions about the webpage or anything else on Forty-Fifth right now?
The only question on webpage I have is you, you've been talking with staff about putting a link on, on the, the city website to that webpage?
Yeah, there, it's really simple. Uh, we've already talked with them about the web name. I think it's going to be, uh. Forty-fifth and Woodlong at planyourcity.com or something like that is what the address is going to be. But, uh, we've already registered the domain, but and so it'll just be add that hyperlink and they can go to it. So it'll be real simple. And I, I didn't, the one thing I didn't mention that I don't have anything ready to show you yet, but one of the other thing that's going to be pretty cool is there's going to be an interactive map. Where you can go to the map, you can navigate to a spot, drop a pin and put a comment. So if somebody says, I have a drainage problem here or. This, this is an issue here. We'll have some opportunity to get some feedback from the community. On specific locations where they can mark it. So you don't have to figure out where they're talking about. So that'll be one other thing that's an option. And certainly it's one of those things when it comes down to it, after you see it, if you like it, you can do one for the city as a whole, where you just have a general one where. On the website, somebody could click a link and you could have an interactive map for the entire city for the same type of thing. So.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you for, for the input and updates. Next on the agenda is citizens' concerns and I've had no cards provided to me. So are there any citizens who'd like to speak to the council? Hearing none, I'll move on to council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just attended, uh, the Lions Club meeting last week. Ty did a great job updating the club, uh, about what's, what all's going on in Bel Air. Um, and then, uh, Thursday evening I attended the CCUA meeting. Uh, I wasn't there as an alternate, just as, uh, in the audience. So the guys will cover most of it. I was just going to say we, um. Mayor is going to be the chair for CCUA, uh, in twenty twenty-four, and that's the first time a Bel Air member has been the chair in several years. So. Um, and those meetings will be in Bel Air in twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh.
Uh, just happy holidays to everybody. Thanks.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I did attend a REAP meeting on Monday, the eleventh up in McPherson. Along with the South Central Kansas Legislative Delegation. The, the REAP group toured the Pfizer plant that's up in McPherson, which was very interesting to see. They make sterile injectables up there, which I didn't know. A lot of the things that are used in hospitals nationwide are made right up there. Uh, and McPherson here in Kansas, which was pretty interesting to see. Following that, we went to KMU, the Kansas, uh, municipality municipal utilities facility. Saw their facility and had some discussion on water in the state of Kansas. The one thing that I wanted to bring back from that discussion to this group is there was some discussion on the state revolving fund. And it was brought up that there are some funding issues for the state revolving fund. Uh, such that it may not be funded moving forward and that is potentially impactful for Bel Air because. We have applied to leverage the state revolving fund for our portion of the future CCWA. Plant upgrades or expansion. And so there's some potential impact to Bel Air. There wasn't a lot of detail on that topic. I did mention it to, to staff and. Uh, I'm sure we'll get more details on that. So, uh, that was, uh, that event. And then I also attended the CCUA meeting where we. Did the typical, you know, selection of officers and, uh, yearly, yearly things. And it was, uh, largely an uneventful meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Uh, David.
Mr. Mayor, um, also attended CCUA and happy that you won the coin toss.
Yeah.
Looking forward.
Hard metal.
I also just wanted to note that, um, plant's been operating well and our effluent is all in the green last month, reported despite a few exceedances in the influent. And we thought that those weren't from Bel Air, but, um. One outlier on the TSS, but otherwise. The good news is that the plant was compliant last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a small report. Uh, on Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend an informational meeting at Bel Air Rec Center. It was hosted by Cara Moment, uh, Bel Air citizen and a fellow of the Kansas State Walking College, class of twenty twenty-three. Uh, I've mentioned her as well as Rebecca Armstrong. They both were in that class. Uh, the subject of the meeting was walk, bike and roll in our community. Topics discussed ranged from the bike ped plan that Bel Air has. That was start, uh, done and, or last updated in twenty nineteen. In addition, sharing just favorite spots to walk and bike in Bel Air and the idea of having a regular group meeting for those folks that are. Passionate about seeing those improvements and continued investments. And the potential to do activities alongside some of the regular community events. In addition. There was a lot of just discussion about the appreciation of wood lawn. I think we hear a lot of negative when it comes to the wood lawn project, but. Uh, everybody in the group, uh, made sure to mention how awesome they appreciate the multi-use path that's been put in. And there's been a lot of use of that. And it was just a really good meeting. There was eight people from our community that you can tell, care. A lot about our community and think it's a great place to live and, um, are just interested to continue the momentum that we have with the road projects that we're doing and some of the. Master planning we've already done. So figured I'd pass that along. And if anybody's interested in that topic, Cara Moment or Rebecca Armstrong are really the best contacts for that group. And look forward to seeing, uh, where their group goes. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I also have gotten several comments about the walk path and, and bike, uh, along wood lawn. That's a. That's a good improvement. I'm glad to see that that came together. So this morning, I, Mr. Lash and I met, had a very good meeting with the KDOT secretary Calvin Reed concerning wood lawn. Yesterday, Secretary Reed personally walked wood lawn area from the railroad cracks to Forty-Fifth Street. To see firsthand what problems we have. So he agreed to get KDOT geotechnical people to study wood lawn and work with us on a solution. And due to the holidays, that may not be till early January before they will be able to get to the, their research, but. It's a good move in that we, today, we don't really have a, a good, solid, um, plan to, on how to go forward. Got some ideas and that's, that's good, but we need to have a solid plan. So hopefully, uh, KDOT will help us do that. Uh, and we look forward to having KDOT work with us on identifying the cause of the road failure and developing the right solution. For the wood lawn. So on December twelfth, I attended a luncheon meeting with a consulting firm who is working with WAMPO. On potential regional transit plan. It's a bus system or alternate concepts. And it appears a, a very good amount of interest in, from surrounding communities to do that. Clearwater, Hayesville, Valley Center, we're all representative at that luncheon. Uh, I also attended the WAMPO, uh. Total Policy Board meeting on, uh, December twelfth. And there's still open call for projects on the fifteen-year horizon for the MTP and TIP. And Bel Air has a list of what was been submitted. And of course, um. Being submitted is only a first step in getting approval, but there will be an evaluation process and many. Projects, uh, maybe most won't make it, make the cut, but at least you have to get on the list to even get it considered. So. WAMPO was awarded nine hundred forty thousand dollar grant to study safe roads for schools. The intention for WAMPO is to engage schools and cities to ensure that all have considered safe routes for children getting to school. And a big part of this is having adequate sidewalks and street crossings to aid in the safety of, of the schoolchildren. And of course, well, there has been working on that very diligently. We've been doing a lot of several sidewalk projects and. And trying to get those things, uh, improved for the kids. So lastly with WAMPO is Tom Heine, KDOT Wichita Metro Public Affairs Manager. Announced he is retiring at the end of the year. You may have seen Mr. Heine on the news talking about status of several KDOT projects. He's the guy with the long beard. In the metro area. So I really, I rely on his ad hoc reports for, and watch for issues that may directly affect Bel Air citizens. And hopefully his replacement will continue the good communication leadership that he's established. On December fourteenth, I attended CCA board meeting as a couple, several city council members have mentioned, I was elected chair on toying costs. And I look forward to getting, uh, resolution to the KDHE consent order and finalizing plans for future sewer plant upgrade or expansion. And hopefully we'll be able to come to terms on a fair financial arrangements. And I know there's a lot of work to be done to put this in, into place. So please continue to support our businesses along with lawn during the construction. And I do hope everyone has a very blessed Christmas. I will not ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, yesterday, the Bel Air Planning Commission had a special meeting. It was an educational workshop. We discussed the importance of the Kansas Open Meeting Act, the processes that we follow in order to stay in compliance. We also talked about the importance of a written record. Uh, we talked about disqualification, ex parte, that those need to be steps and. Fact, factors that we discuss at every time we have a zoning change. We talked about the standard of review, factors that we rely upon, specifically the golden factors. We talked about the standard of review, factors that we rely upon, specifically the golden factors. It was a very good discussion because we talked about each one individually and how we can participate and have a meaningful discussion. We talked about what information, if any, would be helpful for staff to provide in our staff reports, and they did mention a few items. So we're going to try those in 2024, see what works. I just wanted to say I'm very impressed with them. They're very dedicated. They want to learn, and it was a two-hour-long educational workshop. It's difficult to add anything entertaining into that kind of a subject matter, but we were all laughing and had a great time, and they all said that it was very helpful and that we should consider more in 2024. So I would consider it a success. But if any of them are watching, you guys did a great job. Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you. And Mr. Lasher for city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you've mentioned, staff has been putting together our list of potential road improvements for WAMPO. As you said, Mayor, the key is that you have to have it on the list in order to even be eligible for funding. So we're really putting all of our roads on that list. And then we'll be coming back to council for prioritization of which one would be the most important for us to then get into the tip that actually then would allow for funding of that in the future. So we know that 45th Street is very close to being funded, and so we'll want to have something in the pipelines after that. The other thing that we are going to do, and that was one of council's recommendations, was actually apply for what we're calling Phase One of a, of a walking biking path. The, the master plan that was done several years ago had a bike and walking path, really going through the center of town along the, the pipeline that goes from basically Oliver all the way over to Greenwich. And so we're putting together a proposal, and again, WAMPO would pay 80% of that, but incorporating some of the walking paths that were outlined in the REC master plan that you saw earlier, and then going up that from the, the REC Center, going up north to Alley Park, which is right there at Oliver and that pipeline, and then heading to the east and basically ending up at the Catholic Church. And that would be the first phase of that. So we're working with PEC to get that designed and, and in the WAMPO plan to hopefully get that funded so we could start our, that would be a major walking path through town and start linking our sidewalks that we're installing. So pretty exciting would be, I think, something that our community would like. The only other thing I wanted to mention is with the holidays, obviously, City Hall is going to be closed on Monday, the 25th, and also the 26th, the day after. And then, of course, January 1st on Monday will be closed as well. So.
Will we open Tuesday?
Yes, we are open on Tuesday.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the information. So move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. The first item on the agenda is Bel Air Storage Unit requesting IRV pilot agreement in 2022 to develop their storage facility located on the west side of Webb, north of Terra Verde. On July 19th, 2022, the City Council approved a letter of intent to issue an IRV and pilot payments. A cost benefit analysis was completed that showed a benefit ratio of 1.3 for all government entities. The City Council then approved Resolution R 2237 on August 2nd, 2022, authorizing the, the IRVs. Bel Air Secure Storage LLC is responsible for placing the IRV as well as all financial obligations. Bel Air is no way responsible for any debt, but simply acts as a conduit for the bond. As a final step, the ordinance to issue IRVs in the pilot agreement and related documents now come before the council for consideration. And Mr. Kevin Cowan is here to answer questions regarding bonding. Mr. Cowan.
Good evening. Excellent description of the process, how we got to this evening. So all of the preliminary actions have been taken, and many of you probably know and have been by the facility itself. It is not complete, complete, but it has a portion that is complete. And the issue that we're talking about now, and the timing is important, is to try to get this done in this calendar year because the abatement that was granted will begin in the calendar year following the year in which the bonds are issued. So if the bonds weren't issued in this calendar year, you may have noticed the principal amount is just under $4 million, and the estimated project cost was closer to seven. If the bonds aren't issued this year, there's going to be significant value recognized on the tax rolls, and there will be a significant tax bill due next year for the company. And so the goal is to split this single project up into two bond issues and align the abatement when significant value is being recognized by the appraiser. So that's a long way of saying this is Series 2023. There will be a Series 2024 when the rest is complete next year in anticipation of the appraiser recognizing all of the value that following year. Otherwise, this is, is pretty typical of the issues you've had. More recently, the company will purchase its own bond. It has other financing in place. And so in some ways, that streamlines the process, but it's still necessary to document and have the issue in a certain way. So they'll qualify for the abatement through the county and the Board of Tax Appeals.
Any questions for Mr. Cowan? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Bel Air, Kansas to issue its taxable industrial revenue bond Series 2023, Bel Air Secure Storage LLC for the purpose of acquiring, equipping, and constructing a storage facility and authorizing other related documents and actions and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a roll call, though. I need to ask for a roll call on this. Please, please call as a roll.
Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
Mr. John Welsh?
Aye.
And the vote carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item B. The council engaged Burns McDonald to revise and expand the city's wastewater pretreatment program. Representatives from Burns McDonald presented a proposed ordinance at the November City Council Workshop, and then a final draft at the last city council meeting in December 5th. So council tabled the ordinance at the last meeting, asking for some additional modifications. So Burns McDonald, I believe Ms. Becky is here to have incorporated the input from the council and are here to answer questions. Any questions for Ms. Becky from Burns McDonald?
I just have one, Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Becky, do you feel, do you feel proud of the pretreatment policy that we have assembled? Would you speak a little bit to putting it together and just the changes that were made?
Sure, Ty. Thank you. Yes, I'm very proud of the work that staff and, and the support we saw from Mayor and council on this. This was hard work, and it's something that, that a lot of small cities, small utilities don't do because it is so hard. But you guys are very well-prepared for any type of industry that may come into town. You'll be very prepared for any type of just a, like a discharge of, a noncompliant discharge, a slug discharge. All those things are in play now. You have the ability to have not only oversight, but as well as just enforcing any type of noncompliant discharge. The other work that was done hand in hand with this was the sampling program. This program was, again, very well done. The city was able to get a grant for one sampler, then the city wisely chose to pay for another sampler. We put those at the two main lift stations. We're seeing really interesting sampling results and lots of things that are, that we're seeing that is due to just different heat holidays. They, the staff put in some air raiders at the lift stations. We saw impact there. So it's been really great data and data that CCUA has been able to look at as well to determine, you know, what Bel Air's contributions are. So again, great job on both of those two, two components. We've got a little bit more work to do, but overall, I'm very pleased with the work that has been done so far.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I just want to thank you. I think this is the third time where we've touched this at least. So for incorporating kind of our concerns and the balance between, it's kind of a privilege to come into the public water system, and that's a big deal if you're having violations, but also the checks and balances so that it's not all on Ann or Ann's future position were to go rogue. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt an ordinance which sets forth uniform requirements for users of the sanitary sewer conveyance system for the city of Bel Air and enables the city to comply with all applicable state and federal laws, including the Clean Water Act and the general pretreatment regulations, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Smith. And this is also a roll call vote, so I'll ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. John Welsh?
Aye.
And the motion carries five to zero.
Very good. Thank you. So our next step on this issue, and just a comment, is training and communicating with, with particularly an industry of the new ordinance so that they don't get surprised by it. So, okay. Yeah, great. Thank you. We'll move on to item C. Get my computer to work. So Bel Air Lakes developer is ready to initiate the engineering design on Phase One of the development and asked Certified Engineering Design, CDE, to prepare an agreement for engineering design services. The costs associated with the project will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. And Ann is here to answer questions.
Yes. So this is just shown in the cyan color on the screen. They're getting ready to start the design on that. We have already entered into agreement with CED for a 16-inch water main extension going north along Webb Road that will serve water for this subdivision at the time. The original intent was not only for the 16-inch, but also for water to come in filtered through the Cedar Pass subdivision just south of that. They have not constructed enough water main and phasing to get up to the connection point, so the 16-inch main was necessary. They've already done some preliminary work on with the plating process, so they have an idea of where the water sewer and storm sewer facilities are going to go. I have commented on some of those, but this will be putting together the design plan so we could actually get the infrastructure built.
Any questions for Ms. Stevens? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or David.
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement for professional services with Certified Engineering Design for Design and Construction Staking Services for the Bel Air Lakes in the amount of $284,975 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. David and second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next issue is Sunflower Commerce Park Third developer ready to move forward with Phase One infrastructure installation. And so they completed the design and solicited bids for water, sewer, stormwater, and paving. Four contractors responded with Dollinger being the low bid, and developers happy with Dollinger's bid of $1,057,000. The, that includes concrete for the street. The costs associated with the project will be financed through bond and spread in special assessments. So I did send you an email late. I don't know if you had a chance to give any thought to that, but could you elaborate on the difference between the eight-inch rebar versus nine-inch concrete?
Sure. So two alternates for concrete pavement were bid out with this project, as the mayor mentioned, an eight-inch concrete section with rebar and dowels connecting the joints together and a nine-inch plain concrete section. The intent was just to see how much of a cost difference there was between one versus the other. The, there really is not, I don't have specific strength information. That's got to come from the engineer, and I didn't have time to get with them. But the sections are very similar. The rebar in the eight-inch section does provide a little bit of additional strength. It provides, the most important thing is it provides load transfer. So when you have the two joints, that they, they cut a joint between the sections, that's intended for the concrete to control the cracking. So the crack, the concrete will crack at that joint. The rebar helps to connect those two panels, so you don't get one differential settlement more than the other panel. So that's why the rebar is in there. The rebar is the preferred alternative for this project. So that's why we asked to select the base bid with the eight-inch with the rebar.
So these are warehouses being proposed for this development.
That is correct.
Seeing a lot of truck traffic in these roads.
Correct.
Almost primary truck traffic, almost never any other traffic.
Oh, yes. The pavement was designed with the end use in mind.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Stevens? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the bid from Dollinger Construction in the amount of $1,057,755.85 for the Sunflower Commerce Park Third infrastructure project and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. On to item E. So the city was, been awarded an $18,000 from Sedgwick County to fund the Bel Air Senior Center for 2024, the same amount of funding a senior city center has received for the last two years. The county grants helps cover some of the expenses for senior programming in Bel Air. Any questions or concerns about this, this contract proposal?
Mr. Mayor, may I add some information?
Certainly.
I appreciate it. Councilmember Justin Smith shared some information with me. In the past, with this specific agreement, the paragraph 4.7 gratuities and favors, right now, the language states that not directly or indirectly should anything of any monetary value be provided. But in the past, for us, the agreement with Cedric County and Bel Air, there has been language saying that we would not provide any gifts exceeding $50, and that would include gratuities and favors. So I've made that change and put that into this specific agreement. I think it was based upon prior conversations with our previous city attorney in Cedric County. So I would like to let the council know that I have made that change so it is consistent with what you've had in previous years.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up because you have the cup of coffee, and then you're in violation. It's like, what?
And we frequently have events where we provide, you know, hot dogs and hamburgers and ice cream and coffee and putting up a sign that says county employees not allowed doesn't seem very nice to residents of Bel Air who happen to be county employees.
Yeah, I do remember years ago, a, a decast, which is a government inspector, actually would not take a cup of coffee from us for that very reason. It's like, just a cup of coffee. But that was, that was the rule he lived by. So I have to appreciate his diligence to stand by it.
Should have charged him a dime.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agreement for senior centers by and between Sedgwick County, Kansas, and the city of Bel Air.
This motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next, move on to proposals for enterprise resource planning ERP systems. So staff, city staff is experiencing operational issues created by our current 20-plus-year-old system. The existing system, which supports finance, court, licensing, permitting, recreation, utility billing, and human resources, has reached a point of obsolescence and is inhibiting our city ability to meet evolving needs of our community. To address this challenge, the staff has engaged with expertise from Mr. Brian Mackey, a Bel Air citizen and an expert in deploying enterprise IT solutions. a Bel Air citizen and an expert in deploying enterprise IT solutions. Mr. Mackey has reviewed our current process and has played a key role in assisting our staff selecting recommendations of ERP system that aligns with the specific needs of the city of Bel Air. The proposed ERP system will not only replace our outdated technology, but also integrate and streamline various standalone systems across different departments. And this consolidation includes modules for finance, court, licensing, permitting, recreation, utility building and human resources and provide a unified and efficient platform for the operation of our city. Mr. Mackey presented his findings at the December 12th, 2023 workshop. And Ted Henry discussed how the new system would significantly streamline our current processes. I've noted the emphasis on improving online customer service, a crucial aspect of modern governance and that aligns with our commitment to provide accessible and efficient services to our community. Staff developed an RFP for the new ERP system in September, 2033. Following this, we received a total of four bids. Two of them were aligned with the RFP requirements, prompting advancement to the next stage, which involves comprehensive demonstration of their respective systems. Our Bel Air team with Mr. Mackey dedicated their time to review and score each proposal and put forth the two finalists, Casell Software and Tyler Technologies. Both specialize in delivering ERP solutions tailored to specifically for the local government entities. And Ted and Brian are here to answer any questions. And I would like to give a shout out to Mr. Brian Mackey for being a great supporter of this and spending a lot of hours working with staff to help us come to this point and, and decision process. No decision has been made yet, but we have a proposal in front of us. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You did a great job summing up the last three, three months of, three months of work. As you know, we were here last Tuesday for about two and a half hours discussing the ins and outs. I just kind of want to give a broad overview and then we can just answer some questions we had from the workshop and make a decision hopefully. Probably the best thing we did is really evaluate our current processes. I don't think a lot of organizations do that regularly. As a, as a community grows or any business grows, a lot of their, a lot of their needs are met by adding on different applications onto your existing workflow. And what you end up with is a lot of manual entry, a lot of systems tied to each other. And that's what you see up on the board today. This is kind of how the city operates and all the red boxes are, they look ominous, but they're really just manual processes that our clerks and have to do. With this move to a new ERP system, it, it takes the place of a lot of those manual processes and also helps that outward facing side of our government so that citizens can have more accessibility to their information and more accessibility to the city hall online for all areas. That's court, utility billing, finance, planning and zoning, permitting, recreation. So it's a big project and that's kind of what our goal is, is to streamline some processes internally and externally so that one, as we grow, we don't have to continue to grow staff as well as become more efficient and make our employees more productive as society gets more technologically advanced. And I'd say the last 20 years, we've learned a lot of lessons and we put a lot of that into this decision tonight. We talked a lot about Tyler Technologies and you guys had some questions that I wanted to bring back from the workshop. One of them was how our upgrades handle. I won't read word for word, but they do biweekly patches outside of business hours. And then any major software feature upgrade, they'll, they'll, they'll notify our, notify clients and work with them on a schedule to, to upgrade those deployments with the, with support on doing that. There was a few concerns on how was their support during implementation process? The good news with our, our top scorer of the RFP, RFP process was they're, they're very known company throughout state of Kansas and in this area. In fact, the city of Hayesville switched from G Works, which is our current provider to Tyler Technologies in 2022. And we reached out to their city clerks multiple times, but I, we did it again with some of these questions. And they're very, they were very pleased with the switch over and feels that recent, they, they received what was promised within the timelines agreed upon. Tyler deploys a regional team and that was one thing I picked up on is, you know, they, she knew all the utility deployer by name and, you know, you can just kind of tell that they became friends as they go through. Not I call into a call, call center and have to find three different people to try to answer a question of mine as they keep a team close by as you're onboarding. You know, she did mention, and I think Brian, that was one of his keys to the success and on workshop is once we do make a decision, we have a key point of contact in the city. And she said that was also a kind of a lesson learned by Hayesville was they, they thought, you know, hey, you can run your department, your department, your department. And a lot of times it gets a little bit muddled. So once they figured out if they just have one point of contact and then that point of contact distributes what needs to be done works best. So that's, that was something good. The Arc City also is a kind of a long-term, a long-term client of theirs and they kind of done the natural grow module by module. And we talked to them and they talked about how they went on to the payment system and they're, they're wanting to do more and more and more. So I thought that was a good sign to have as well is not only do we have someone new saying that everything went smooth, we have some older clients that say, yes, we had a good experience with an upgrade and we're going to continue to upgrade as their budget allows. Five, 12, 512 support was another concern and really, that really just means that they have user support available from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which is probably five more hours than we're used to. So I thought that was pretty nice. And then of course, anything with technology that goes down, they're going to be on. They have, they're a large company. So they'll have ability to, to address our needs. I called around on that type of support. And it's, a lot of these systems are during business hours is when you find out if something's wrong. So a lot of people I called said, well, we've never had to call them after business hours. So that's one of those things. That's a good sign, but also not much information out there on that, but I was assured. We also talked about employee training videos. If they watch them, are they trackable? Meaning if I have a clerk that I say you need to go through some training, I'm able to see that he or she watched the seven videos in the series and track it. And that, that is available with Tyler University. Backflows, the mayor was concerned a little bit about the 2024 black backflow process being affected by this. I was worked with Deb and Garrett who kind of run that program and the 2024 backlog process will, will include the Laserfish online forms, which is what we've been planning before this implementation. And then Garrett will receive those and implement those into the iWork system, which is our current provider for really permits and different things. The neat thing about Tyler in 2026, you think of black backflows as kind of a permit issue, but it's actually a utility issue. So right now we have an issue or have the problem with Garrett move in, people will move in, move out. And it's kind of a little bit hard to control with an Excel spreadsheet. We moved that on to iWorks. But in 2026, we'll be able to attach it to the utility address account. So we'll know if someone moves in or out. We know that there's a backflow there. And then when the contractor, the permit comes through, it'll be attached to that. So it'd be a lot smoother process. Councilmember Smith asked me about Ezra, Ezra on the planning and probably saying that wrong, but planning and zoning side. I checked with Keith today and, you know, really it's, it, it's not that, it wouldn't be that big of a deal and it wouldn't affect any of our current systems. So what Brian and I did, we met with Tyler, just judging from the conversation and on the workshop and asked for their best and final. We had three areas of concern that we brought back to them with, from the workshop. One of them was, you know, hey, can we get a little better deal? We, they, they gave a discount on the software rental about 11, 11.8%. We thought they could do a little better. We asked for 30% discount. They came back with a 21% discount. The big thing we were talking is the original contractors for three years. A project like this, we kind of thought maybe we could get some savings if we stretched it out because there's not a whole large likelihood. Once you get set up, you're going to move. So they agreed to a five year term. They also agreed with no, no increases in that first five years, which I thought was really nice. Also, we kind of asked for any future increases to be tied to like a consumer price index or something like that. It was, it was our offer, but they also came back with, they would cap a 5% increase on years six and seven. So we wouldn't see more than a 5% increase until year eight of this project. I thought that was really nice. And I tried to show up here, you know, the original contract, original offer throughout the first seven years, that's estimating. Say, hey, after that third year, they're going to give us a 5% increase every year after that. Versus what their new offer was, essentially about $118,000 difference over this eight years. So I thought that was a pretty good return. The other thing we were talking about in the workshop was can we set some milestones? Do we want to give them all the money upfront and hope that it gets developed in one year? They were a little reluctant, but they came back with, okay, once you sign the contract, you pay 20%. And then at June 1st, 2024, you pay 30, 50% of the, of the fee. And then the remainder of, no later than 12/28 of 2024. So it, it doesn't necessarily tie it exactly to the deployment, but at least stretches out the payment. The, the only real cost savings I got in that is I can invest that, that money in a money market account and it'll, it'll grow about, I estimated about $7,000. So that, that's what I estimated that value to be worth. So those were the three, the three different areas that we touched on and a brief description of each and what it does to the, the, the offer is also provided there, but we can discuss those or I'll open it for questions. But it's more of the long-term effect of having a, a five year with no increases plus the sixth and seventh year with only a 5% increase.
It sounds like this, you've had some good negotiations going on there. That's great. I really appreciate the milestone thing. The way it's laid out, it kind of, you know, this is not going to be just a title. You do everything. They don't. City has a lot of responsibility in this too. Our staff will have a lot of responsibility making sure this is successful as well. So it's a, it's a partnership. We both have to step up to and make sure we're doing. So I think that that's a pretty, pretty decent proposal they've made there, realizing that it's all, all on them and it's all on us. Okay. So then the other thing is I do want to emphasize, and, and I know we've said this, we've talked about this in private. We cannot be doing any customization of the software. We can set the toggles and we can make sure that the toggle work for us and it makes sense. But you start doing customizations, you're looking for problems. And so that really needs to be well understood by everybody. We're not, that is not what we're about and that's what we're going to do with this. Figure out how to make this tool work for us as best it can. It's not going to drive us and we're not going to drive it. It's going to be a partnership. Okay. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Henry? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just a question. What we had in our packet was the proposal from Tyler and from Casell. Have we actually seen a contract from Tyler? Do we have a contract that we are approving or are negotiating? I'm interested in some of the specifics of like, what does the contract cancellation terms look like? And, and some of those details.
And that's where I, I haven't received the contract yet, or I would have provided it. Brian Mackey is, we're, we're well aware of what, and that's kind of was our discussion earlier today about milestones as well. Yeah, this is nice, but if we have to get out, how do we do it? I will say, you know, the city of Hayesville, in their conversations, you know, they said, you know, some stuff that maybe just didn't work or didn't, they didn't, they didn't want the company as quick to credit them back, you know, a lot of those types of little things. But so, so I think once we get that contract, obviously I'll have Brian review it and our city attorney review it as, as quick as possible. Because a lot of, I think the, the deal we got is because it's towards the end of the year. So I'll make sure and go through that. And I, I think having Brian on board will also help us with some of those minute details of software implementation and guidance.
So that's a small concern or maybe even bigger than small, but without a contract, what we, what we're being asked to approve tonight?
Authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Okay. So relying that we get good contract review and everything before the end of the year. So I have something that's solid to, to sign.
Correct.
Okay. I guess my only question is, is the council comfortable with taking that tactic? Because we don't have another meeting before the end of the year. And I understand that the negotiation is based upon them getting a, a deal by the end of the year. And the way these companies work, if you wait till next year, it starts, the clock starts all over and they're not negotiating mode until the end of March. All right. If I remember right, first quarter, end of the first quarter. So something certainly consider.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I think I'm comfortable with that approach because I'm also comfortable with you guys. If you get the contract and it doesn't look good, just saying, yep, we're not going to do it. And so as long as everyone's on the same page, that that's an option too. And that we would do that if the contract doesn't look good, then I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Can we word that into the motion somehow that, that we have to get a suitable contract? Maybe Maria needs to, the city attorney needs to review it or? How do we do that?
She definitely needs to review it.
Yeah.
At the very end of the line, authorize the mayor to sign all related documents contingent upon staff review of the contract. It sounds like that's what you're trying to do and everything's based upon the review.
Okay.
I can work with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Um, Ted, what is the, were you guys just negotiating to the very last minute and that's why there isn't a contract? Or is there a specific reason why there's not a contract here tonight?
Yeah. I mean, this offer came in this morning. I, you know, that I, I believe that's kind of how, how it works, I think. But again, I haven't, haven't done this too frequently.
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's my last question too, is are we approving a not to exceed for the seven year term or for just the first year? How did you want to do this?
Yeah, I just wondering that myself.
Well, I'm assuming, and a shame for me to assume it, but I'm assuming all those terms that he laid out there on this slide are in the, will be in the contract.
Yeah, but this total on here is only 300,000. That didn't cover seven years.
That's true.
Well, I mean, it, it's, it's much like any other ongoing service fee we, I mean, you, you'll just approve the contract or approve, approve the, and the one-time fee with Tyler and it's a new fee. And the annuals, and the annual subscription, I guess that that's what you'd say.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Just to clarify, that first number, that 304178 was their previous best offer. Before, before the number came in, and that includes the one-time fee and year one.
And year one.
So the second year would be something we would approve as a part of a future city budget? Would that be baked into a future budget process?
Yeah, we'd have to, yeah. The authorizing side of it, yes.
But depending on the contract, we may not be able to get out of it.
Yeah, it's baked at that point.
Yeah, the first five years is fixed, fixed price.
So, so our bid amount is 293, 272 because that's the new negotiated amount.
Right. That's new.
Or we want to just approve based on the terms outlined on these other slide.
Cause the negotiations occurred over a five-year. So is it six, is it actually six? Isn't the base plus one, plus five? Or what was the? We could figure out what that number is pretty quick.
It's a 693.
I think we can only approve what we can spend next year. We can't approve the second year payment or the third year payment.
But we're approving him signing a contract that will have terms.
Though we're approved a contract that, that has future years in it. The actual approval expenses comes through your, your budget and appropriations ordinances, but, but you're approving a contract. You're proving the legal terminology of what you're obligated to. And I think it would be a, way I read this is a seven-year deal, right?
Yeah, fine. I'm in. Yeah, five, I'm in. Yeah.
Five, firm fix.
Five.
Okay.
Sorry, five-year.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, what I might suggest is maybe the wording would be maybe a motion to accept a bid from Tyler Technologies as presented by the by the Assistant City Manager, subject to staff final review. That way, we'll incorporate what is on Ted's slide into that contract and then we'll get the wording. Maria can review it to ensure that it's meets your requirements. And then when we would be comfortable, then we'd ask you to sign based on the what was presented tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add that that would be better than what I suggested because I was out of the office and missed the workshop, so I'm not familiar with the details that you're discussing. And that would allow us to rely on specifically what the Assistant City Manager is sharing with the council.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I will make a motion to accept the bid from Tyler Technologies as presented by the Assistant City Manager and for subject to staff and the mayor's review for the purchase of a new enterprise resource planning system and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
Most of you, Mr. Smith, and secondly, Mr. Welch. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next issue on the agenda is executive session. I think I would like to ask for a five-minute recess and then follow that with a 45-minute executive session for item A. So first motion is for recessed.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
A motion of Mr. Dean and secondly, Ms. Hamburg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Recession for five minutes. Thank you.
Hey, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. Ready to move on to item B, which is another executive session and we'd like to ask for 15 minutes. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Burg.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319b2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney. The meeting will be for a total of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
I'll second.
I motion, Ms. Hamburg, I second with Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Executive session for another 15 minutes. I think Maria's gonna, were you gonna work on, what did we have on that?
Was it gonna be the ninth, or, I feel like I saw a date for the 16th.
We're gonna talk PEC about that master services agreement. We're gonna talk about that, and it seems like Maria had some things that you wanted to cover, but I don't remember what they were.
What if we slid everything a week? We got five Tuesdays in January.
Yeah.
Oh. I am going to be out of town on the 30th, so that won't happen.
Well, we wouldn't have a meeting on the 30th. We could have a meeting the 9th, and workshop on the 16th, and another meeting on the 23rd.
But if we don't have anything for the 2nd yet, we should be okay, right? And if we need to tack something on to the 9th with a special meeting, we can.
Well, the problem is, then it's gonna be three weeks until the next council meeting, so we'll accumulate them backlog for the first February meeting, possibly.
I guess we could always schedule a special meeting for the 23rd if we needed to at that point. Like, if you had something between the 9th and the 16th, and we wanted to have an actual full meeting.
No possibility. Yeah, I think we should see how that works out, because it depends on how much is coming up. If there's not that much there, then there's no reason to do that. If there's a lot there, maybe there's a reason to do that. Or something urgent comes up, obviously. Alright.
So we'd do a workshop on the 9th.
Do we need to make a motion to council that meeting? Because that's part of the regular schedule that's already published, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I would suggest, would you agree, Maria, to make a special motion to cancel the first meeting in January?
Do we want to cancel it, or slide it to the 9th?
It's up to, you know, again.
If we don't have that much, we could have a half-hour, hour-long meeting before the workshop.
We'd be able to make that announcement ahead of time and do a special meeting. So we should probably just wait.
Yeah.
And see what we have. If we have something, we make it. If we don't, we don't.
Just spitballing. Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
See how it goes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion that we cancel our regularly scheduled January 2nd meeting, 2024.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Hamburg, and a second by Mr. Dean to counsel the January 2nd, 2024 city council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries 5 to 0. Alright, so, next item on the agenda is adjournment. I want to make a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. I second.
Is there a second?
Yep.
I second. I thought there wasn't gonna be for a minute. There was kind of a hesitation.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries 5 to 0. We are adjourned. I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we will see you next.